Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 27th, 2019, to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Mr. Gamble.
Here.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mrs. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Larson.
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For item three, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Nielsen? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For item four, we have community comment. Would anyone in the audience like to make a comment? Okay. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and then also sign in on the sheet.
I actually already signed it on the sheet, so we're good. My name is Melissa Casca. This is my husband Craig. We live at 6953 South Phyllis Lane in Franklin.
Hi.
Hi. So I am here to speak to you about a concern that I have and a request that I made to have the location of my daughter's bus stop changed. The reason that I requested for that bus stop to be changed, oh, and by the way, Madeline is 14, she goes to Franklin High School, she's a freshman. My husband and I have some safety concerns about the location of Madeline's bus stop, and so we are requesting that for those reasons it be changed. Some of the concerns that we have are, like many neighborhoods in Franklin, we do not have sidewalks, there are no streetlights. Additionally, Maddie has seen coyotes on her walk to the bus stop. She just go to the bus stop at 6:24 in the morning, which means that from November till about now, she is walking in the dark. Also to add to that is that she's walking alone because there are no other kids who are walking in the same direction as her. She was afraid when she encountered the coyotes for the first time. It is mating season, for those of you that don't know that, so she asked me to walk with her. So of course, I said yes, I will walk you to the bus stop. And honestly, as a 48-year-old woman, I was nervous. We were, we have to go out of sight of our house because we live around a bend, and it was dark, and it was cold, and it was snowy, and we had to kind of walk down the middle of the street. I mean, think about the winter and the weather that we've been having lately. So it is not a long walk, but it's scary. And so she's, if not necessarily afraid, like she's nervous and apprehensive every day. I did request through Mary Jo that her bus stop be changed for those reasons, and I was denied. The reasons that she gave were it is common for high school students to have to walk in the dark, and it is common that there are coyotes in Franklin, and that they want to maintain common corner bus stops. That decision is upsetting to me because I didn't hear anything about safety. And that is the first thing that I wanted to hear, is that not only do they want my daughter to be safe, but all students to be safe. So because I was concerned about that, I appealed to Dr. Miller. I offered to meet her within any two-week period so that we could take that walk together because I really think, like if you look on a map, it's just, it feels very different in person. She declined my offer, but she did say she would be out in the neighborhood looking at bus stops, and I appreciated her being willing to take that step. However, when she did come out, again, Maddie was frightened because we did not know the day she was coming out, she was not in a car that was marked with the Franklin School District. And so if we can't take my daughter to the bus stop now because of our work schedule, she has to text one of us. So Maddie was texting saying, "I'm scared, I'm uncomfortable, like there's people sitting in a car watching me." And in light of what's happening in our world today, like I was concerned. I suspected that it might be the school district, but I was not sure because again, we weren't told the date. So we talked to Maddie about what she would do in that situation. We were glad that she was alert. And then I mess, I emailed, and I did find out that it was Dr. Miller who apologized for scaring Maddie, which I appreciated that apology. Again, my request was denied, and Dr. Miller cited that her situation is not unique and that it's similar to other stops in the district. If you want, I have some pictures there so you can get a better idea. Again, it looks very different in person, but how it works is student A, the bus comes off of Highway 100, she is picked up in her driveway because the bus turns right there, and obviously, like that makes sense, right? It's going right by her driveway. Students B, C, and D go to the bus stop. The bus stop is marked with an X. So they're walking one or two or three houses. They're within sight of their house, which means they can switch on their porch lights, which they do, and then they walk together and they wait there. And then Maddie is the circle there, and if you look, she is also going to bus stop X. And I, the picture on the bottom is our house. As soon as she gets to our neighbor's house by those trees, that is where she is out of sight of our house and of any light that would reach her. So she is in the dark from that point on. That is also where she sees the coyotes because if you look at the map, you can also see all of that green is Whitno Park, so we are like a highway for coyotes, and they run back and forth. We see them frequently between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning. What I'm asking for, I feel, is a very small and reasonable change because once they get on the bus, the bus stop then continues and goes right past the end of our driveway. So I'm asking for 30 seconds. Maddie is always on time, she's very prompt. So, and I'm just asking that they go the same way, you know, that I'm not asking for a route change. I'm just asking for them to make one additional stop so that she can be at the end of our driveway, that it's light, that she's not a girl walking alone every morning. So I'm here advocating for Maddie, but also for the safety of all students. And I feel like if there are other students who are facing those same kinds of situations in the morning, then we should also be looking at what, at what they're doing and how we're making those decisions. I understand common stops, I understand efficiency, but I am upset that safety was not the first thing. It was not anything that was mentioned to me. And I would like for her and for any other student that is feeling uncomfortable because it is so early in the morning, because we don't have streetlights and sidewalks, I would like for them to be able to feel safe and for that to be the priority.
Thank you for your comment. I just want, you know, this, first I want to thank you for going to Ms. Herman first and then to Dr. Miller, but the board leaves those decisions to Dr. Miller as a final decision-maker, so all we can ask is that she maybe give another consideration and contact you again, but that the final decision is up to the administration. So I thank you for coming to the board tonight with your concern, and I don't know if you have anything you want to say or if you want to contact Mrs. Casca again, but.
I'd be happy to talk to you further about it.
Thank you for coming. Is there any other community comment tonight? Hearing none, then I'll close community comment and go on to item number five, consent agenda. Would a board member like to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is school board announcements. Are there any announcements? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, March 13th, 2019, here at the Education and Community Center at 6:00 PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting here Wednesday, March 27th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And I'm sorry, I do want to make a note for the record that we started the meeting at 6:34 tonight, for the minutes. Thank you. Reports and presentations and other school board business, item eight, the treasures report is available in the Board docs library. Item 8B, middle school construction update and discussion, Mr. Milzer and Dr. Miller.
Well, as you can see on the, on the tour, they're really closing in on finishing up the building. There's a lot of trim work to be done, but they think they'll be done in a couple of weeks with at least the majority of that. We have some punch list items to look at and to determine yet, but it's going very well. And then, of course, once we get beyond the building itself, when the weather warms up and the school ends, we've got taking down the current Forest Park and then creating that big parking lot and parent drop-off drive during the summer, and then finishing up by moving this huge pile of dirt back there for the fields that'll be back there for the kids to play on eventually. So that's, I guess that's where we are at this point. There's a little bit of landscaping to be done, too, in the spring, but that's about it. It's really, really coming together, and you can really see now what it's like and what an exciting space it's going to be for students.
Do you have anything to add?
No, just that this would be a time for you to ask any questions about things that you saw in the building or just some discussion time for you about the new school.
So we saw those wonderful heating things, furnaces.
Boilers?
Boilers.
So there's nothing on the rooftop then, or it's all?
Oh, no, there's, there's, there's the, the air conditioning compressors are up on the roof.
So there is air conditioning, okay.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, it's so much like what's behind your house.
You think they're.
The compressor and the condenser that's behind your house, they're up on the roof around that, around that penthouse that we were at, that last penthouse. I don't think you made it all the way to stairs.
I didn't get to see the penthouse.
And, but there's very few things on the roof. It's always better to have them inside the building, they last a lot longer. So we built those penthouses, and they're all a penthouse. If you think about Ben Franklin, we did the same thing. The only thing that's outside of Ben Franklin is the unit that heats and cools the wiring closets because that needs to be cooled all year long. So we have special units over those rooms that will cool down to minus 20. Your home air conditioner won't work at that temperature.
And all the electronics is all wired? Because there's no computers anywhere, or is there, was there a computer room, or? No, there's no computer.
An actual computer lab?
Well, I don't know, is there some?
No, you're talking like the servers, things like that.
Oh, well, there's, there's, most of the servers are housed here.
It's just wired underground.
Yeah, there is, there was, right next to the elevator, there's what's called the MDF, or the head-end room, and there'll be a lot of materials in there. That's the main distribution point, but then there's also four IDF's around the building to keep the runs short so that we get a better bandwidth and better speed.
Can I ask what IDF is? Can I ask what IDF stands for?
I think it means intermediate distribution frame. MDF means main distribution frame.
And so the furniture comes at once?
Parts of it have been ordered already. I'm working on that right now, I'm finalizing some of those pieces. We have a major shipment coming in about three weeks of furniture, and because we bought it, we looked at, we looked at what would be best for the kids, and we ended up buying from different, different pieces from different vendors so that we could get the right mix of furniture and the right quality of furniture for the kids. And so, again, there's a big piece coming March 31st, there's another one that's probably about two weeks behind that, and then there's a number of things I still need to order. But at this point, as long as we stay this early, we're not into furniture companies' summer rush because most of these are school furniture companies and they're all their businesses, and they do all their work in the summer. So by ordering it now, we'll get it in fairly, fairly quick fashion.
And nothing's coming over from your building?
Nothing is a bit, very, not a lot is coming over. The usable furniture, but we, right, for example, there's a lot of desks there that are the old-fashioned desks that, that you can't move, and it's not flexible, and you can't move around, and how do you, how do you group kids together, how do you collaborate? We're not going to bring those over, as an example.
And was there any teacher input on any of the furniture selections?
Oh, quite a bit. We had a test, we had, we bought a test room. Those will come over. We bought a test room and we put it into the, into the Forest Park, and we had everybody look at it, and we got some input into that, as well as the whiteboards. We talked about a whiteboard paint, a whiteboard wallpaper, and an actual whiteboard. Can't we just have whiteboards? They work a lot better. That's what we got.
Did, did you make a decision as, are we going to open the gym earlier than the school in August?
The, the parking is a real problem for us, you know, that's going to really.
Because of demolition?
Right.
Okay.
Constrain how much we can use the school because there isn't going to be enough space to park many cars.
That makes sense.
And then I think once the school year opens, we're going to try to limit the amount, at least for a period of time, because you want Forest Park to grow into the building with all those clubs and all those things that, that are going to be good for that level of school before it gets filled up with everything else, because it'll get filled up. We built it, they're going to come.
And will that still be run through Mr. Anderson's office?
The community and the recreation department piece, yes, but there'll be some athletic pieces. We're looking at additional sixth-grade teams in several sports. Mr. Heine from the high school, the athletic director, he's working on that piece with coaches and such. So we give a good, well-rounded experience for the kids. And quite honestly, the growth of clubs and athletics in that building has been somewhat limited because of the building. There's a, there's a, I guess we have a rule that, off, off the ceiling in the old gym, I think the ball's still live, I'm not sure. I keep telling them it's, it's like home field advantage, but they don't seem to agree.
When's the last day of class again at the middle school?
The 31st.
May 31st?
31st. Yeah, I haven't memorized because I've got a, we're moving a few things that week that don't affect kids, and then that following week is a big move. So we're out of there in time for them to demo it, demo the old one. We're promising to get out by the 14th, so we have two weeks.
So we have four more snow days.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
And how long does the pile of dirt stay out here then?
That's likely to spill into the school year because you have to get rid of that building, you have to get it all graded, and then they can move the pile of dirt because that's going to, that's going to fill, bring up the fields. We save quite a bit of money by actually not hauling that off and then hauling in new dirt. It's going to be inconvenient for a few weeks, but it makes a whole lot more sense.
Well, the school's beautiful. It's, thank you for the tour.
Now, I also want to say, and I mentioned this to Judy and a couple other people, but, you know, we're getting rid of that building, it has a lot of history, and people remember it. Is there any, how are we going to bring something of that building into the new one? I don't want it just to be wiped away and the memory gone forever. Do we?
So we had some discussion at a recent meeting, and I believe the, the parent group at Forest Park is creating a time capsule. Do you recall some of those details, Mr. Reuter?
Parent group and student council is developing a time capsule to show progress through the years of that school, and they have, they're working, they have a team that's working on how to recognize the history and nostalgia of Forest Park.
I think of time capsule, I think of something that's buried and then dug up 25 years later. You're not, you're not thinking of that, you're thinking of a display?
I don't know.
What are you thinking?
They're coming, they're, they're throwing ideas at the wall right now so that they can.
If I haven't, can I throw them?
But Dr. Miller shared to Mrs. King at that meeting some of the sentiments, so then she was going to share that back to the group to maybe put a different spin on how we define time capsule.
Okay.
And, you know, I'd actually like to locate a, a good photo of our school and have that in the new school, so we have at least a full.
From the air, though, right?
Well, I don't.
Because it's the shape of the building.
We'd probably have a good photo from before, just to kind of get that somewhere in the school and the dates it was built and the date it was retired, if you will. But I think a photo for sure would be nice.
And just want to like, how's the budget going?
Very well.
I see we got 16, 16, 70% spent, or is that the balance?
No, that would be 70% of it is spent for this year.
Spent, okay.
Yeah, and then, like I said, we've got quite a bit of work to do even after the building is built. It wasn't just building the building.
The demo, I'm sure, is.
The demo, and then the, creating the parking lots and the fields and finishing up, so.
The furniture is probably not off of here either?
No.
Are there any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item, yeah, where are we? Item nine, school board liaison reports, 9A Personnel and Policy, Policy 4001 Privacy in Locker Rooms, action item, Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. We do have policy coming for the board today. There's some minor changes, some language added. The last time this policy was reviewed was in May of 2010, but it had more, more to do with adding the word capture from an image standpoint and relating to images with privacy in locker rooms. Dr. Miller, anything else you want to add to keep this one up?
No, I did have legal. I consulted with legal just to make sure there weren't any changes in the law, and there haven't been any changes in statute regarding this.
Since this thing was written, have we had many incidents where gotten a hold of somebody's phone and, and reviewed it as to what they may have been accused of? Because number three is, when the district has reason to believe that any person has violated this, you would have reason to believe one other student said, hey, I, he was taking pictures, and if, no one's tried to get somebody else in trouble by doing that, for example.
So we haven't had instances of this, and then with regard to looking at someone's phone, we really can't do that. The police have to look at the phone. There, there've been occasions where students have voluntarily shown what's on their phone to an administrator, but they're very careful about not handling another student's phone and getting into it because they're not legally able to do that.
If there's, if there was an incident, can, is it legally permissible to confiscate the phone?
You can confiscate it, we do, you know, but we don't go into someone's phone.
Yeah, no, and that would be fine, but as long as you can confiscate it.
Yep, yep, that's a common practice. We commonly confiscate phones.
Then if, if that's the case, which I thought it was, then, then I have an issue with, what is it, paragraph five, because it says we will search the phone. I just, I still think that should be reworded then, that we should have the police there to.
You can add that language.
I mean.
Is it B5, is that where you're looking?
But it says, what don't you like about it?
District officials will search the contents of the, of that cell phone.
I know, but it says Wisconsin, okay, district officials, I understand what you're saying.
Technically, our police liaison officer could be considered a district official. He does work for the school district, but if you want it to be more explicit, we certainly could make that change.
I think general is better in cases like that. As long as he's a district official, I'd just make it general. A district or law enforcement official, maybe just add that.
There was a time we didn't have an SRO for a few years.
Well, but if, if we don't have an SRO, then the law enforcement official would suffice. If we did have an SRO, then the district would.
I think someone could, could read district official and have no reason to think that wouldn't be an administrator.
Yeah, true.
I think if you want to make that distinction, I think we should.
Just go with law enforcement.
You're correct.
Yeah, I have no problem with that either.
I just want to protect the, the district employees.
And that would, that probably would. And then it would also specify that district employees shouldn't, and it has to be law enforcement official.
And protect the students.
Oh, exactly. It's protecting everybody. You're, you're correct in saying that, making that change. I agree.
So school officials would confiscate any cell phone recording device?
Yep.
But law enforcement officials are required.
Will search the contents.
Will search the content, okay.
I can make that change.
Is everyone agreeable to that?
Because then they can figure out how they're going to get into it or not. Because that was another question I had asked in the background.
And is that in reference to some state law then, that it has to be a, assert that?
It's according to the Attorney General.
Oh.
So then we're looking for a motion to approve revisions to board policy 4001, including revisions just made tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second? Second by Mr. Lewis, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we're moving on to 9C, school and community engagement visits. Oh, sorry, B liaison reports, sorry about that.
Okay, I'd like to report that the Educational Foundation did meet last week. I was not at the meeting, but I did participate in evaluation, and they did award four grants. There was a $5,000 grant for the middle school transition camp to assist with cost of the, the camp, and there's $5,500 for a portable sound system for Franklin High School, to be used primarily by the Coral Department, but other organizations can use it. And also, there's $4,500 for a photo wall mural that's going to be installed in the lobby of the Sabre Center, and then I think also another place in the high school, but it's interchangeable panels that will, you know, show students and engage students and all the opportunities that they have available, so.
You said that was a grant?
It was a grant.
So, do you know what department requested that?
It was, um.
Mr. Heine?
Yes, Mr. Heine.
That's nice.
He's forced equipment like that in the past. And then also, there was $1,500 sponsorship for the Black History Month celebration that happened last Monday. They also contributed to that. So, and then I think I mentioned that they now have four scholarships, they expanded their scholarship offerings, so if you have a student looking for that, check the website. And their next event is April 13th, the consignment sale. If you have kids, you have stuff to get rid of, it's the place to do it. And that's all for the foundation.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? All right. Now, school and community engagement visits. Do we have any?
Yep, I went to.
Sorry, you first?
Okay. I did attend the Black History Celebration on the 18th, and it was well put together. It shows, it's growing and it's maturing, it's becoming a better and better event. Good history segments that were in, Arthur Ashe, virtual reality, I forget the comedian's name, there's a thing on Netflix this month about black history. Daddy's soul food was a hit. That was several different menu items they had there. Overall, it was just an excellent showcase to the community. It was an inclusive event, you know, everywhere you looked, there was people engaged in the moment, enjoying everybody else's company, whether it was kindness, they did a kindness pledge, whether it was sharing Daddy's soul food, the opening ceremony, you know, it was overall a good event and saw a lot of smiling faces there.
Thank you. Did you have something, Linda?
I also wanted to add that the, what's the Sabre video thing, I'm drawing a blank.
Saber Roar.
Saber Roar had really kind of a cute segment on the, the soul food.
Yeah.
It just goes on, everybody's eating the food. That was kind of funny. It just goes on, everybody's eating the food. That was kind of funny, if you want to look at that.
It was good.
I also got a chance to attend the middle school breakfast. Talk about tradition, you know, that's kind of neat to meet students and, and their parents. I, and it's also good to get parents' perspective on what, you know, what their issues might be. Um, some great kids. And, um, and that's kind of when I thought of the idea about we need to do something about the middle school going forward. That's all I'll say. It was, it was good. It's always great to, to do that. So don't pass it up. You get a chance to go.
Okay, um, I also attended the, um, Black History Month Celebration, so besides what Mr. Gamble said, um, I really enjoyed looking at the, um, the artwork that the students did and reading their statements about their artwork. It was some, some really personal, um, statements from the students about why they created their, the Black History artwork, and I read every single one. It was very interesting. And I thought the participation in the, um, event, it, I, it was more than doubled from last year, so that was good. And, um, I, I was impressed by how many, um, of our staff volunteered this year at the event. Just so many, um, guidance and, um, teachers were there, so it was nice to see that. And then I also attended, um, the, uh, South Suburban, um, Chamber of Commerce Awards Dinner with Dr. Miller and Rachel Fredericks. And it, it was nice. There was a lot of people there. Um, yeah, I guess that's-
Nice, but the food wasn't-
Food was not very good. Um, the Crown Plaza, it seems to always be there, you know, Creek, yeah. Um, but it was- Yeah. Yeah, it was a nice event. Um, Tri-City Bank won the Business of the Year award, so, yeah.
I think we, the CEO from Frehderd was the speaker, and she was talking about healthcare. And, um, it was, it was interesting. She is a very brilliant woman.
Uh, business perspective. She could have talked all night. She could have talked, so.
I also attended the, what's our committee?
Education for Employment Team?
Education for, yes. They had a seat there, but anyway, uh,
No, I wasn't there.
Um, we talked about, and this is, this got rescheduled three times, so we finally, uh, did have the meeting. It still was a little bit sparse, probably could have used a few more people, but kind of working on how to engage the community, where to find, where to make those contacts and promotions. And one, uh, area that came up was the alumni, um, which I want to say that there was some talk about doing a committee at a different district level, and it's also very interesting. That group is of interest to the foundation also. And there have been attempts in the past to figure out how to, you know, organize that and contact alumni and stay in contact with them. So if you're pursuing that, you know, bring them in. So, um- You mean the chamber? No, the, um, Educational Foundation. They went interested in, in the alumni and how we, uh, work with them and for job contacts or, um, um, you know, future donations or contributions. You know, our alumni have a lot of, uh, connections. So that was that meeting. So I did those.
I'm, I attended the middle school wrestling banquet. It was a fun event, and, um, the team was bigger, was the biggest team ever. It was, um, well over a hundred parents and little wrestlers there, and so that was very, very exciting to see all those happy faces. And there were two girls on the team this year.
Where was the banquet?
At the Hideaway. All you can eat pizza.
The what?
All you can eat pizza.
Yeah.
And the food was very good.
Tell the chamber.
Wrestlers and all you can eat?
Pizza.
Oh, must be into the season.
Yeah, oh, it is. It is.
At middle, at middle school, they don't have to watch their weight.
So there's two girls on the Franklin wrestling team?
Middle school team. So they had forty wrestlers this year, and there were thirty-eight boys and two girls. First time? First time, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think the high school's ever had a girl wrestler.
I haven't heard it yet.
Yeah.
I know that my son was in middle school. At one of the events, there was a girl wrestler. And actually, I worked with a colleague. She was a wrestler.
It's always interesting to watch the girls.
Yeah. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Uh, school board debriefing. Any comments? Okay. Future agenda items, we have the Franklin High School, a Franklin High School presentation at our March thirteenth meeting. The twenty nineteen twenty preliminary budget assumptions at the March thirteenth meeting. Uh, an athletics and activities report at the March thirteenth meeting, and technology report for the March twenty-seventh meeting. Then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Um, motion by Mrs. Larson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven oh eight.